Well, no, the problem was they could hear us whispering. So if you're gonna whisper, don't say anything you don't want to. I can't really stop.
Scott, we're ready. Get a holding key. Yep.
I'm doing fine, thank you.
You ready, Gina?
Yeah.
Brian, I apologize.
Hey, you're talking with different copies. I have some, I can make copies here.
I was surprised I was able to figure it out.
Okay, 'cause I didn't bring any.
I'd like to call the City of Portage Council meeting to order February 4th. Pastor Schmidt, would you please do the honors and pray for us?
We're gonna say thank you. I work for the living and the land and the free and the home and the right. And those of us in the audience tonight, we were free to vote. These in the council that were elected are ready to run. And I just ask you to give a whisper of direction tonight as we do our best to lead this city into the future. Your name is God.
Amen.
Thank you.
Gina, would you start off with the pledge of allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, on the occasion of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all? Clerk Treasurer, would you please call and roll Councilperson Alvarez?
Here.
Councilperson Tagorski?
Here.
Councilperson Geizy-Hurst?
Here.
Councilperson Clem?
Here.
Councilperson Williams?
Here.
Councilperson Gully?
Here.
Councilperson Zilly?
Here.
We have the approval of the January 7th, 2020 minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? I do have a change in the minutes on the second page, the fourth line down where it says Mayor Snyder requested a roll call vote. Please change your reference to reflect that. We have a motion to approve the amended minutes.
So moved.
See where we're at? It's on the second page, up at the top, like the fourth line down. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Communication, correspondence, and announcements from the mayor. I only have one announcement. I'm gonna keep harping on this, you're just gonna have to get used to me. As you know, most of you know that this year is a census year, and I can't tell you how important that is for Portage. April 1st is Census Day and beyond. Portage gets about $2,700 for every man, woman, and child in the city annually over 10 years. We had one of the highest census participation rates in the year 2000, but we dipped in 2010. And that is not good for Portage. We're concerned that if we don't get our numbers up this census, it could dip again, and that would not be good. Portage residents can, if you're 18 years of age or older, you can apply with the census to work for the census. I believe it's around $25 an hour, so they are looking for census workers. So the mayor's office is forming a 2020 U.S. Census Count Committee made of members of local government, the Portage Township Trustees Office, the school system, the chamber, and more. And the committee will come up with a plan of how we can get those numbers out. We're gonna have more information as you go on. Watch the website. Our website is still a little bit under construction, but it is very, very important. You can go online and do the census. There's all sorts of ways, so watch for the information. Get your neighbors. We need everybody to fill those census papers out and get them back. So that's all that I... Clerk Treasurer, do you have a report?
I do. I just want to, on the record, to the council members, that they need to attest that they are in compliance with the nepotism policy, and also sign a conflict of interest disclosure if you feel you need to. Also, I had a resident reach out to me regarding some funds that he thought maybe the city might be owed to from the Attorney General, the unclaimed property website. So I checked it out, and he was correct. So we're gonna get $1,992 and some change. We are in receipt of our bond bank proceeds. 100R has been completed on Gateway, and we are on track to file the 1095Cs for 2019.
Just one question, Clerk Treasurer, Rivas. On this uniform conflict of interest disclosure statement, is that something that we only sign if it affects us, or does everybody need, every council person, need to sign that?
If it affects you.
Okay.
If you're doing business in the city and there might be a conflict.
Okay.
My suggestion, Scott, is that if you are in doubt, do one. If you have to stop and ask yourself, "Does this affect me?", do one. Better safe than sorry, but if you have nothing that would even get rise to that question, then it does not require.
Right, good point. I would just ask the council members to review that, to see, as our attorney suggested, if there's any doubt, then I would definitely, definitely sign it. And then, do you collect those, Clerk Treasurer, Rivas?
Yes.
Okay. And then also review the nepotism clause that's in there. Those, I think those are two important documents. Thank you.
Clerk Treasurer, I have a question on the unclaimed property, the second item, Wendy's International. I thought that we, they either were buying property from us, or we were buying from them, and I would like to ask our attorney to check that $1,050 out, or do you know what that is?
Well, it's from the, it was unclaimed, it was already awarded to the city, and it wasn't collected with Attorney General.
So I would think, Mayor, you're correct, we are nearing the end of that land close where we're doing a land swap sale. And I think that the clerk is correct, that if there's unclaimed property, it would be from before all that, so.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Nina, can I ask you a question? On the 1095C, is that just through 2019, or?
Yes, the 2019 will be current.
Will be current?
Yes. Yes.
So this 2018s and 17s are filed?
No, I'm doing the 2019s first.
Okay. So we haven't filed the 2018s or 17s.
So that'll be next after we get that all. What is it?
Any further questions? Okay, thank you, Nina. Reports from standing committees, does the budget committee have any reports?
We're in the process of compiling more information. We're waiting on some stuff from Nina, so as soon as we get that and we have everything, then we'll plan a meeting.
The ordinance committee, does the ordinance committee have any?
We did have a meeting scheduled. We ended up having to cancel it. We'll reschedule in February to review the personnel ordinance and any new ordinances before the March meeting that might come up.
What about Ways and Means? Is Ways and Means?
Yes, I'd like to put a meeting together on Monday, February 10th, at 5:00 p.m. Colin, if that works with you and Brian?
Works for me.
You and, but I mean, we're on ordinance committee, so we're gonna reschedule that same day.
We can schedule them.
Okay. But this is for the Ways and Means, Monday, February 10th, at 5 o'clock.
Can we schedule? Can this serve as notice, Nina, at a public meeting? Okay. Can we just schedule ordinance at 5:30 then? Do we think we'll need a half hour for Ways and Means?
At least.
Okay, so maybe?
5:30, 5:45.
Okay, we can schedule for 5:45 for ordinance committee.
I wouldn't be able to do that.
Oh.
I work Monday nights.
Oh, you work Monday?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we can find another day for ordinance before the March meeting.
That's fine, I was just trying to package it together for everyone.
Does the strategic committee, the strategic plan committee, do you have anything scheduled?
Strategic Plan Committee did not meet in the month of January, but I just spoke with Mr. Monroe prior to the meeting, and we're going to be communicating on how to work with the strategic plan and get the ball rolling.
I think, if I may add, the street, Alvarez asked the strategic planning committee to work with Mike Gonzalez on the importance of the census and putting together a plan to make sure we optimize those responses to this year's census. Before we move on, Mayor?
Yes.
That meeting for the Ways and Means would be at City Hall upstairs Conference Room. Would you, is that okay with you, Debbie?
That's fine.
Okay, would you advertise that for us?
Sure.
Please. Clerk Treasurer?
Okay, reports of city officials, Captain Catiano? Oh, Chief, I'm sorry. I'm so used to calling you Captain.
Just like that, you were demoted.
Just got demoted, Mike.
Man, that didn't take long. Geez, what you do?
I am so sorry.
Dang it already. I thought you was doing a thingy.
No, you're fine. I just got a little bit. All right, well, good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so first off, your daily, where are people at for it? We've got two that are in the academy, and they can talk about the last time they were just either just getting ready to start any of that meeting. So they're in the academy, they're doing well. We've got three that are in field training right now that are also doing well, that should be released for their solo patrol here in a little bit. As always is the case, though, it's, you know, a couple steps forward, a couple steps back. We have two that are on major illness now that have suffered some injuries, so hopefully they'll be back eventually. But we keep plodding along, so we'll get there. We'll be full staff sometime, hopefully in the next four years. Calls for service in January this year, we were at 2,900 calls, so that's about 93 and a half calls a day. So it's winter, but, you know, it's been kind of a mild winter so far, so I think that's keeping our call volume up. People are still out and about, so. A couple of good things, we, once we took over, we had some meetings with the Portage Township Schools, and we are back working in the schools, filling some of those part-time roles. We've got five officers that have been assigned there, and I believe today was actually one of the first shifts, so.
Nice.
Excited to be back in there. You know, while we were out, we had still maintained a partnership with them, we're still on their security committee, and we're doing things with them. The fire department's involved in that with us. I know they did some school assessments and things today, so we've got a pretty good partnership going between the city and the schools again, so just wanted to share that with you. Don't know if you're gonna touch on this, but we played in a basketball game last Thursday.
I wasn't gonna touch on it, we lost.
I know, I know some of you made it to that. The Portage Council hosted a basketball game between us. I thought it was a good time. Wasn't the prettiest of basketball.
Hard fought.
But it was fun. Hard fought game, we did edge them out by a little bit. We're not bragging, but we did win. So I have.
And what was the final score?
I don't remember, I think we won by four. It was, it was very close at the end, so congrats to them for, like I said, it was a good time, though, we really enjoyed it, so. So some more good news, we got a $1,600 grant from Enbridge Energy Company, and what we're gonna do with that is we're gonna purchase 12 medical kits for our patrol officers, so this will be like go bags in the cars, tourniquets, things like that, so if we arrive on scene that we can start immediately treating, you know, as before the fire department gets there. So we had had a limited amount of this, of these, and guys ended up purchasing their own things, but now we can get an actual 12 of these full kits, so that's, that's great. So we appreciated the donation from them, and it's gonna, gonna be well served, so. Let's see, what else here? I wanted to take just a quick minute here and read a report from you guys, just at the end, I wanna thank some of our officers for a job well done, but I just felt this was important for you guys to understand some of the stuff that we deal with on a daily basis. So on the 26th of January, at about 10:19, our officers responded to an address here in Portage for disturbance. While we're out, they were advised by officers on scene that there was a male subject with a gun pointed at his head, he was threatening to shoot himself. So the officer that wrote this, when he arrived, he views the man in the backyard with a pistol in his right hand, pointing it at his right temple. He tells the officers multiple times to put the gun down, responds that he was going to shoot himself, and point the gun at officers so they would, so they would shoot him. So basically, he's talking about a suicide by cop kind of thing. He then walks into the backyard, still pointing the gun at his head. So our officers there at the time followed him, they're trying to maintain, you know, safety for us and for everybody else involved. So in the process, the officer that wrote this report is actually, it's Corporal Matt Johnson. He starts talking to him through the process, he gets him to put the gun in his pocket, kind of establish a rapport, they keep talking. At one point, he ends up coming forward, talking to the man, asking if they could shake hands at that point. He extends his hand, he grabs him, everything goes safely. So the reason I bring this up again is because I want to, first of all, recognize these officers, and I hope I didn't leave anybody out, but Officer McGraw, Officer Bullinger, Overton, Mo Van Crook, Peel, Stanko, and Dowd, Sergeant Swazaluski, and Maynard, and Lieutenant Messina. Could have been a very bad situation. I, you know, I heard about this afterward, I read the report, and I was just very proud of the way they handled it. You know, you see a lot of negative stuff out there in the press at different times in the country, and this could have ended very badly, and just so impressed with the way they handled it. So I wanted to get that out there, but again, I also wanted you guys to just understand some of the stuff that we're dealing with on a daily basis, and they're doing a good job. So that's all I got, questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, pray now.
Thank you.
Chief Sosby?
All right. We, you guys should have got the monthly report from our department. We had about 102 calls for service. Coming out about 13 calls a day, pretty average for us. Nothing really remarkable. January's typically not a real busy month unless we start doing some severe weather, so it's pretty difficult. I did want to state a couple things. I guess we did play a basketball game. We did lose, he asked by four points. I was thinking we were gonna boost my double digits there pretty easy, but he actually pulled a little closer. I did want to say I thank our firefighters and the police officers. That was a completely voluntary thing. They played 12-minute quarters, which for anybody who knows basketball, that's a, that's a long quarter. And they're not really conditioned to run up a non-basketball floor. We can do other things, but not necessarily run up a non-basketball floor, so they would help the youth group raise some money and everything, so it was a good time, so.
I thought the fouls was gonna be about an hour, quarter.
I felt so nervous that we were.
You had an injury though, Chief, how's your?
He is still out, he has a limb injury, he's gonna have some further testing, so hopefully he'll be all right. Did also want to state that this week is the IFS National Burn Awareness Week. Did want to touch on just a couple statistics. Most burns do occur in the household. About 33% of all burns are scalding-type burns in the household that require admission into a burn unit. And out of those 33%, about six, a little over 60% of those are children five years and younger. So pretty alarming statistic there. So we just want to kind of remind everybody, be safe in a home, when cooking, hot coffee, water, all those things, be real careful around youngsters, and make sure your home is childproof. We also did receive a grant, $1,000 grant from Indiana American Water Company. Not really sure what we're gonna use that for, we're gonna, we received a couple smaller grants as well. We're trying to accumulate some of that money to tackle a larger project here in the future, so we're gonna hold onto that for a little bit. We did have two firefighters retired. You may know some of them, Jeff Dowling retired after 21 years, I believe, and Chad Boe. Jeff Dowling was lieutenant with us, Chad Boe was our division chief, so he was our on-duty incident commander. He retired after about 21 and a half years as well. So we thank them for their service over the past few years, and in our awards ceremony in June, we will recognize them as a member. We are in the process of replacing them as well, so that'll take a little bit of time. We did want to express our sincere gratitude to a couple of staff members at the YMCA. We hope to recognize them at our next city council meeting. We did have a retired firefighter go into cardiac arrest at the YMCA. They did perform CPR and applied an AED and shocked the firefighter, and revived him. And I went and saved him in the emergency department that night. He was doing well, cracking jokes, and so hopefully he'll be, he'll be fine. So we do plan on recognizing them at the next city council meeting with our community life-saving network. So thank you to them for doing that. For those of you who may not know, that is our second firefighter that has been saved by an AED. So they are very important tools out there in the public, just as important, if not more important in some ways than fireworks. So if you own a business, if you can track people somewhere, we really encourage you to use those, or to purchase those and use them if needed. The YMCA that we know of has had at least three saves where people have left the hospital and gone on to live a normal life after that. I believe it's four, but I know for sure that we have three saves after that, so fantastic job by those.
Chief, on that point, do we have AEDs in all of our city buildings?
I don't know about all of them, but there's AEDs in, just, I, I'm not sure if there's one at the street department or not, but I know there's, is there one street department? Okay. I know they're in the park department buildings, they're in City Hall, police department, I believe, hasn't moved, they got a new squad there also. So I believe so, yes.
Okay.
So what about training and all that?
Do we get new employees? Do we train them on how to use that equipment?
We have on occasion, we, the fire department would be more happy to do that again, we've done that before, so yeah, we can certainly.
Probably something to revisit.
Something like that, yeah. I know the utility people, street department, they come down routinely, every couple of years, and we train them, so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. One more thing, we do have the blue bags there. Wait there, can you grab that for me? You guys may have heard about this in the paper, it's a, it's a program called Ben's Blue Bags. Basically what's in there, recently we completed some autism awareness training, basically for our firefighters. We've done it before, but this has been a little bit more in-depth, specific to this kit here, where we have basically learned how to, new ways of dealing with autistic adults and children, and adults and children with sensory disabilities. So in these kits, these kits were started in Ohio. They were brought to this region by Matt Kodecheck, who is a crime point firefighter paramedic, and he is the brother of our assistant fire chief, Dan Kodecheck. So the reason they're called Ben's Blue Bags here is Matt's son is on the autism spectrum, and his name is Ben, so he's kind of spearheading this into this area. We have put these on all of our rigs, and basically they're just tools for us to be able to interact with an autistic or sensory disabled person. And all of these devices have been tested, and they work very well with basically calming the autistic patient down quite a bit, so we can get to the bottom of what their problem is. Or maybe you can just take them out of the, the actual crisis, the sensory overload situation that they're in, so. We just kind of want to make you guys aware of it, we got this through, did we get a little bit of grant for this? I can't remember how we purchased these exactly. I know they were offered at a discounted rate just because of the program being bought into the studio, so. Again, we hope we can never ever use them, but they're out there if we need them, so. There is a chart there that we can also have the patient point to. A lot of times they're, they're not capable of verbalizing, so a lot of times they can point to wherever they're hurting or whatever the problem is. So I don't know if you have any questions about any of the objects there, but they are, they do work, so. Any questions?
I do. On the way forward, can you clarify a couple things for me?
Sure.
The emergency medical service incident other, what does that typically?
That's probably just a call that, listen, we get all, we're, like the police department, we can call for all kinds of weird things, so.
So is that where, you know where to put it?
Yeah, so generally, because it falls into a category that is, that is tracked.
It just doesn't.
Then we just move it into other.
Okay, and then one other, assist invalid.
Illegal.
I have the same question a year ago. Now I don't feel bad about asking that a year ago.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. I just solved the puzzle.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Randy, are you here? Come on up, Randy.
Email most of the report that I was gonna give tonight. In January was kind of mild, so we had a high day of 58. And then we only had two days in January that were actually in the single digits, and it got down to one degree on January 23rd. But we did have four winter events, and we did respond to all those in the department. We did about 1,389 working hours during those events, so that's how much work we do put into storms. The men and women down there do a great job. We are expecting another winter event coming tomorrow. I seen this highest forecast of three to five inches, so we're prepared for that. This January, we did one, oh, no, 940 MSW tons, those are, are, this probably solid waste tons that we picked up. Recycling was 780 tons, and which would brought our diversion rate to about 22.3%. So I did finish up 2019. I was looking for some numbers from the county, and I did submit that report to you, and that's what it looks like there. I don't know if online could see that, but we did a great job in 2019, and the overall diversion rate would calculate it in with the leaves, the limbs, all the recycling, the e-waste, the tires, metal. It came, we almost reached 40% for our city, which is, it's a great number, 40%.
Can you explain a little bit further, Randy, what is meant by the diversion rate?
The diversion rate is anything that we do not take to the waste or the landfill.
The landfill.
The landfill. So the only thing that, the amount of tons that we picked up and took to the landfill was a total of 13,235 tons. That's what we landfilled in 2019. What we avoided going to the landfill was a total of 8,548 tons. So the county would love to see us get to about 50%. A lot, we got a lot to go there in the next couple of years. We have our contract actually up for renewal, so that's gonna take some great negotiating on our part with whoever picks up that contract, so. Any, any questions on the report?
We just want to say that landfill costs are over $55 a ton now, and I think people don't realize it when you look at your Sewerville and you see that trash behind there, but in no way is it ever covering that landfilling cost. We spent, in just the month of January, $58,000 to the landfill. And we are expected to spend about, is it about $700,000 that we're gonna spend on just landfill fees? So the numbers of recycling need to get higher to save us the money, because we can't keep up with the rising costs. And I think if you hear Randy reporting that every month, you'll realize that it's way over what we budget for, because the cost of landfilling is gonna continue to go up as landfills fill up, new ones aren't sited, and they become. new ones aren't sited and they become farther away for our people to have to haul. We go to Republic, but they take it a lot farther. So just be aware of the cost. We're, we're just not meeting those costs right now.
So with the black lid toer, is it a lot similar for residents to understand the black lid and the green lid toer that we put out every week? Uh, the black lid toer amounted to 12,636 tons for 2019. And our green lid toer was 3,270 tons, which is about 20 and a half percent, 20.6%. So give everyone a good idea.
Is that just the raw number of coming out of the green toer is that how much was usable? I mean, a lot of the, the green toer stuff isn't always usable or is dirty recycling, you know, I mean...
Uh, yes, the public service is really cracking down with dirty recycling. Sometimes people think people's bathrooms are recycling, but they're not due to the, the contaminant oils and the fats and stuff like that. So we really encourage residents to rinse out any tin cans, milk jugs, anything like that. Give it like a free rinse and, and it'll be good for the recycling, so.
I have something for you, Randy. On Monday, February 10th, we have a Ways and Means meeting scheduled for 5 o'clock. Would you be able to attend, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor, you're welcome to as well. Dan, if you'd attend, you're more than welcome to.
Actually, as superintendent reader, I just wanted to commend the street department for addressing an issue on land served between Robins and Lute. There seems to be an ongoing issue. I was contacted by a concerned resident of a private plowing contractor who during winter events continues to plow the snow from the parking lot onto the public sidewalk. It was taken care of this time around. I was just wondering what the process would be to make sure that's ongoing. So the next time around, we don't have to keep addressing the same issue.
We meet here at a, a, a private plow companies through the city and they'll plow the parking lot into the street and they'll leave a pile there. Uh, we've addressed some of those issues with those private companies and I encourage businesses to really police their contracts with their plow removing services and, and address that with them. And please do not plow snow into the roadways. It, it's very dangerous, the passive fires, and also it makes our job a little tougher, so.
And if I can, um, I had, I think the same resident reached out to me about the same issue. Code enforcement actually did look into it. They're identifying the plowing contractor to address it directly with them. But they assured that they'll keep an eye out for it to make sure it doesn't happen going forward as well because it was directly on the sidewalk. They put it on the sidewalk and the entire sidewalk was unusable, so.
One other thing I'd like to remind residents that we're not over with the winter yet and anything that's two inches or more, please remove your vehicles from the roadway so we can easily plow.
You did a really good job. Barb, I know you heard from the marinas, kind of a quiet time for you. Do you have anything?
I've got a couple things I'd like to talk about.
It is quiet time at Marina, we're kind of like in winter mode. But we, we have been slow, but we do have a few people that are daily launching. It's our collection time. We're collecting money up until March 31st. That's when the still payments are due in full. One other thing I can talk about is we're working with Avon Marsh and IED. This is something that the mayor had sent to me about a week ago. We're trying to pursue 100% grant opportunities. It's kind of a long title, but it's called Fiscal Year 2020 Trash Free Great Lakes Grant Program, which is trash removal from the Great Lakes river mouts and harbors. In other words, cleaning up Ernst Waterway or the ditch. It's a, it's a large grant. It's a, it's, there's $10 million that are available and that's going to be divided, but the grant is due by February 14th. It's kind of short notice. This is the EPA and all the other governmental agencies that are involved in it. They're just not giving us a lot of time. But we're working with Avon Marsh and I'm working with the Port Authority to see if we can get the ball rolling on this. I had people come to the marina in previous years wanting to know what they can do as far as cleaning up the waterway. There's a lot of garbage and just, it's, if you, anybody that does any boating or fishing along the waterway can see how nasty it is. So hopefully we're going to see something on this. I hope that we can get the ball rolling in time. We're going to participate again this year in the Chamber Commerce's Fourth Annual Fish On Event. That's at Woodland Park, February 22nd to 23rd, from 9 until 4. The Port Authority has been a silver sponsor for four years. We pass out free stump safety brochures, tourism brochures, marina information and clean water information. So if anybody gets a chance, I know the, the Chamber really works hard at this event. It's a nice event and I would hope that everybody would try to attend. March 19th, we are going to host a Clean Marina Roundtable and that's going to take place at the Portage Lakefront. The time will be announced. I think it's going to be like from 10 until 1 or 10 until 2. The event is sponsored by IED, the DNR, and anyone is welcome to attend. Uh, the usual attendees are marina harbor masters, managers, maintenance personnel, general marine employees. And it's a seminar that's set up to help marinas and boatyards establish best management practices and it covers topics such as disposal of hazardous materials, storage of hazardous materials, fish waste, oak leaning in operation, aquatic invasive species, which are the quava and the zebra mussels, Asian carp, toxic plants and fueling. It's just, it's not anything that they push. They're not trying to get you to, to do things that are unusual. They're just out there to give you information. And it's, I mean, this is our second year that we're hosting it at the lakefront. It's a pretty good event. That's all I have.
Could you repeat the date on that for me, please?
Yeah, for the Clean Marina Roundtable, it's March 19th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Barb, are you aware of the IED's Governor's Award for Environmental Excellence Program? Okay, that is, you know, you can nominate, so maybe the marina could get nominated for, they have seven categories that they, they accept nominations for, like recycling, pollution prevention, land use, improvement plans with the marinas. So those, those nominations are due like April 6th. So I'll forward that to you. You know, we'll always put in for an award if we can. I know you do a lot of hard work there, so.
Thanks, Barb.
I'll hand that on to you.
Okay, thank you.
Barb. Anything else?
Thanks, Barb.
So last but certainly not least, we have a, a new person in our administration that I'm excited to have back here in the city, A.J. Monroe. Uh, he is our community development director. He knows our city well and we are so happy to have him on board. He's been with us for a couple of weeks now. So he's going to give us a report, even though he's been here for a couple of weeks. He's really been doing some serious stuff, so. Welcome back, A.J. We are so glad to have you.
Well, thank you, it's good to be back. So I really appreciate that. The last 10 days have been really busy trying to find my footing and understand what's going on and how best to move the community forward. But there's been some projects that I've had to, you know, require some immediate attention and I wanted to share with you those projects, where we stand with them. And, and, and so I'll just get right into it. Um, I, I would start by saying, very similar to the other department heads you've heard from this evening, that it would be my intention to submit a written report to you in advance of your meetings. Um, because as you see, I'm going to try to be short tonight, but as we get back into this, these reports are going to be rather long and I know you have a lot of business to take care of in your meetings. Um, so I would like to start with an update and report on Central Avenue East. Earlier, last, or late last week, we met with the, 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 the construction company, the general contractor, as well as our construction engineer to get an update. We are toward the end of that project. I know many of you will be relieved, many in the community I'm sure are as well. There are a few remaining items that include adjustments of the castings. I know there's been some concern that it's sort of still a rough ride, but those castings are still set to be completed. You should expect to see that work beginning in early spring. Landscaping, there's some additional landscaping that needs to be put in. Landscaping in general, creating up some property or the project area and then, and then striping. So those are some of the things that are left in terms of closeout on the Central Avenue East project. Shifting gears, we have another project. And you guys will remember last year, much of Willow Creek Road was under construction with paving from Central Avenue South. We have another project coming in next year. This is a federal, a federally aided project that we received a number of years ago as a community and we're ready to go. Notice to proceed on the project was issued late last year. Again, we met with the, the general contractor and the construction engineer on that project. As, as you know, early work has already taken place out there with some of the relocation of the utility on the west side of Willow Creek Road, near Willow Creek Middle School. But construction work will begin earnest in late spring of 2020. I, I'm thinking that it's around June 1st. And that substantial completion of the project would be August of 2020. My understanding is that in that has the contract under a pretty tight window for work. And of course, with every intention to be wrapped up prior to the next school year beginning at Willow Creek Middle School. The, the work includes some widening, some, some controlled access along that section of Willow Creek Road. It'll include a concrete median. It includes the closing of Evergreen. So there are some things that are, are going on in that project that are going to be, it's going to be very important for us to be out there communicating with the residents because I know there's been a lot of fears over the last couple of years about the impacts that the closing of Evergreen will have, whether during construction or after. So it's going to be very important as I better understand what the work schedule really is going to be. We will be very clear in sharing that with you, the community, to make sure that everyone's aware of what's going on. We just earlier today submitted our application for Community Crossings Matching Grant. We are submitting a grant requesting the full amount from the program, which is a million dollars. Again, you know it's a 50-50 match, so the projects that we submitted are totally right around $2 million. Again, this is a grant application. It's our understanding that we'll hear whether or not we've been awarded the grant in early spring and I understand that to be around April. So we will let you know about that. Uh, the roads that were included in the application, and again, the roads that are included in the application are, are discussed and identified in our Pacer program, which is the program that identifies our, our conditions of our roadways in our community. I know you know there are many of them. These are three of them. But, but when you hear them, you'll understand these are some significant investments. Uh, the first is Dami Road. As you know, Dami last year saw a major reconstruction project between the railroad and Indiana Toll Road. This project contemplates the paving of Dami from Central Avenue north to the railroad tracks and then Dami from the north approaches lab of Indiana Toll Road to US 20. So that will be a completed, a completely reconstructed Dami Road from Central Avenue to US 20. The second is a project on Boulder Avenue between Oakwood and Hickory. So an area that's near Countryside Park. The road is in very poor condition, had one of the low, it has the lowest, one of the lowest rated roads in the city. That work will, that project will likely include some drainage work. Uh, there's a low area that needs to be addressed. Fortunately, we have an outfall location at Countryside Park to run that too. But the last is Swanson Road. Uh, Swanson Road from US Highway 6 down to 700 North, the entire segment. So it's about, most of it's a two-lane section, but there's a, a three-lane section. Now, about 80% of the project's a three-lane section with the multiple subdivisions on the east side of Swanson Road. So those are the three projects that were included in that grant. They do total the, the maximum request that we can, that we can seek in the program, which is a million dollars. And as I indicated earlier, it would be your expectation to hear a word from the state of Indiana early spring. I believe it's going to be.
A.J., a question, did we run into a problem in the past where the project came in under budget and then we ended up owing money back? So did we this year, when we submitted the application, submit for more work above the million?
Yeah, we've, in this grant application, understanding that that's happened to our community in the past, pressed a little bit to push beyond that amount. We, in, in calculating what is expected in, in the wheel taxes, we make our way through the year, understanding that, that we may have some opportunities to, to leverage some, some support by the Stormwater Board, specifically that project on Boulder, that we really pushed that amount so that we would, that it would get back to a million dollars. We did submit early, it's been our, our experience in the past that getting that application in early gives the inbound review or time to maybe offer some advice. Um, and, and, and we're going to take these few days if they have some suggestions of ways to, to help our, strengthen our application. We're going to take that advice and, 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 and resubmit. Again, that application is due this Friday.
A.J., do you know offhand that Swanson Road project includes sidewalks all the way to 6? This road?
Yes, sir. I believe as we make our way and have more time to prepare, Mayor Lynch and I have spoken, Dan and others, I'm sure, that this is a road, these, these three projects are really road reconstruction projects. As we get more sophisticated, I get my feet back under me when we're identifying. I, I, there's, there's that subtle difference between a, a road reconstruction and a road project that may include other things that would include sidewalks and, and more of a robust investment, curbs and things like that. Um, I believe that in the years to come, you'll be hearing me talk about projects that are more in that line, but these, but these three very specifically are road reconstruction projects. Um, so, so the position wears many hats. One of the ones I'd like to report, and Gina was there in attendance with us last night. We had our plant commission BZA training last night. Um, it was well attended. All the members who were, who seated and able to be here were here and that was great. We spent some time talking through the citizen planner guide, a document that's published by Indiana APA that really gives an overview and understanding of what plant commission members and board zoning members can expect. And, and a really good piece to help them understand that we've all been through this before. This is the job, we're all really here to work together. We talked about the rules and procedures of both the plant commission and board zoning appeals. As you all know, a well-run meeting is a, a, an effective meeting. Um, so we're, we, we, we over, we, we spent some time reviewing those. We did talk a little bit about our zoning ordinance, where we are, what we need to do. We then talked a little bit about our department's goals as it relates specifically to planning and, and including the early work of developing a work plan for Boulder and updates and a city comprehensive plan and, and our downtown plan. And there will be other plans like that set, you know, put forth in the years to come. But it would, it's really key to get a comprehensive plan, really looked at, and then, and then downtown. You know, downtown, I think the plan was approved by this, this body in, in January of 2000. A lot's happened between then and now, so it'd be great to, to, to revisit that with what we understand is out there today. Um, so we're, we're looking forward to that. Last month at your council meeting, as you adopted the salary ordinance, included in that was the position of city planner. Uh, one of the things that we've struggled with in, in the last several years is having somebody in our community looking forward. We've been caught in the planning of the day as opposed to looking forward. So we have posted with, with the advice of council, we've wrapped up that job. So we have posted with the advice of council, we've wrapped up that job posting. It's posted internally as well as externally. We're hoping and soliciting responses that are due at the end of the month. So if you are aware of anybody who may be interested in serving in the capacity of City Planner in Portage, please direct them to that posting. I've already received one resume, so it was posted yesterday, so that's good stuff.
Where is it posted at?
It's posted at City Hall, it's on the website. Posted at Indiana APA, the American Plant Association's national site. Sonia today was looking and posting it today and working to post it on the LTAP or the Purview website. And we'll also be posting it on the AIM website formerly Indiana Association of Cities and Towns. If there's any advice on other locations, you are aware that we can get the word out, please let me know. The more places it's posted, the better. We're really looking to get some great responses back. And so any help you can provide is greatly appreciated. We are continuing to work as a department with reviewing and preparing a budget for the redevelopment commission. We're working through that, we're also working through the contracts that are handled by the redevelopment commission. It's our intention to have a proposed budget to the RDC as, and any contracts or services that we may need for their consideration at their meeting on February 27. And then we're also working with the mayor, members of the board, the sanitary board, and the stormwater board to move forward on the 2020 budgets for both of those departments. Ideally, at the end, we know this, that these projects that I talk about, councilman, councilman, that are bigger than one specific thing. And it's going to be important for us to understand that a project could be monies from storm, water from sanitary, money from redevelopment, possibly leveraged with some of the wheel tax dollars and the Community Crossings Grant. So I'm looking forward in the years to come that we're better deploying the assets. They're limited, but we have the assets that we have to strengthen our community and improve investment in infrastructure. Real quickly, on a few other things. The office is open, I would encourage you to please come by, visit. I'd love to talk to you, I'd love to get to meet you, I'd like to get to know you. It was an offer that was extended to the plant commission yesterday. It was weird for the members of the plant commission, all of them, because they haven't had a meeting at City Hall. They've been sort of nomads. So the idea of coming to City Hall, being in the department, that was exciting for them. And I would really welcome you to City Hall, welcome you to the department, and I'd love to hear what you have to say and share our thoughts in terms of how to move our community forward. Earlier today, I was in NERC, which is the Northwest Indiana Regional Plant Commission. It's a place that we haven't been participating. It's a place we need to be. And the mayor has been there, I've been there. It's important for our community to be represented. People look to us as a leader in Northwest Indiana, and being back, I think is very important. So it's great to be there. One of the things that I believe should have been reported last year is that we did receive the support of the Northwest NERC to submit the Willow Creek Road bypass from the Indiana Toll Road to US 20 as a critical urban freight corridor. What that means at the end of the day is that while Willow Creek Road, that segment of Willow Creek Road doesn't have a designation of an interstate, a US route or a state highway, it is critical infrastructure of the United States as it relates to the transport of freight. That is good news. Historically, Portage had a great relationship with the Indiana Toll Road Commission. We could work collaboratively in the toll road. The toll road commission would assist in providing resources to the city for the paving of the bypass. In more recent years, that hasn't been our experience. This opportunity, I think, is very important for us to explore. And I'm really, and I think the leadership that got us to where we are today, for me to report this is important. So I would commend those folks who helped us get there. That, with that said, as you know, the city of Portage reprogrammed some federal dollars that were previously earmarked for the Samuelson Road, the one lane bridge. And that project, it was the final determination of that project was not going to happen because of the amount of investment that was required by CSX Railroad. So that money's been reprogrammed, and a portion of that money was reprogrammed to this segment of the Willow Creek Road bypass. That's great news. So we are moving forward with getting it, hopefully getting it identified as a critical urban freight corridor, which will be great for the next time we have to pay Willow Creek. But if this time, we have the ability to move forward. So our plan in this turnaround is to begin the engineering work for that project this year and the intention to deliver the project as a construction project next year. The city is working collaboratively with Porter County because included in that project are improvements to the approach slabs of the two bridges at the railroad crossings that were across as both the CX and the Norfolk. Again, a couple other things, we're moving forward on the Marquette Greenway Trail, the next segment that's in Ameriplex. That project will go through its last engineering reviews this year and should be ready for construction next year. Yes, sir. So the last thing that I have, thank you for that, is the city via its Parks Department made the application to the state of Indiana for the Next Level Trails Grant Program. That application was submitted in November of last year. It's my understanding that those announcements are to be sued. The website identified late January, early February. I am unaware of it as of today, but I didn't check access in the end in the last, you know, so maybe it's there, maybe not. But that is something that's been applied, and I'm unaware if announcements remain. Again, my every intention is in the future to submit this as a written report and then when we're here at a meeting to then just be able to answer, ask or answer any questions you may have of what's in the report or anything that happens between distribution and this meeting. With that, I'll stop.
I just want to say, AJ, you've done an amazing job picking the ball up and running with it and getting us in the loop on some very, very important factors that are moving our city forward. And I know the entire council feels the same way, and it's been tough. But you have jumped in with both feet, both arms, and done whatever you needed to do. And personally, I'm excited to have you back on board.
Thank you, AJ. We have unfinished business, the 2020 membership dues. I talked with Scott about this. We decided we are going to leave it as a working document temporarily till the annual finance report is done so I can pull all of those and add them, because there are many that weren't, it's not accurate. We have no new business, so we will entertain comments by members of the public. So if you wish to speak, please step up to the microphone, state your name and your address.
Reverend Mike, I'm from Portage. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to speak to the council about the development of the property behind the Dais Inn at Highway 20, Chris Munro. I have concerns that a truck repair shop is in negotiations with the city for this parcel between two hotels and one of the pocketed clusters in our city. With a high concentration of restaurants and hotels, meaning whom I've spoken with over the past two weeks, the placement of a truck repair shop in the midst of this focused development that has recently since seen significant investments by major hotel chains and national food franchises goes against, I believe, how the area is organically being developed. A better use for this property would be one in which the focus is on tourism and hospitality that is maintained at this key highway interchange and gateway into our national park. I see an opportunity for this property to enhance those key sectors and address transportation infrastructures in our city at the same time. First, given our cities need to relocate the current undersized airport shuttle lot downtown, which is seven minutes from the highway, that would both free up prime downtown real estate as well as shaving 15 minutes off the shuttle bus schedule as an incentive for service expansion to the airports. Equally, moving the existing Greyhound bus stop currently next door to this property at the Travel Inn into kind of a more dedicated regional transportation hub, I believe would facilitate tourism into the gateway area for the city and for the national park. Additionally, bringing in other things into that property such as revenue, generating electric car charging stations, picnic tables, and using part of that property as a green space buffer with the residential areas to the south would be a better use of that property. I believe we can do this type of development as a partnership with many organizations, including the Indiana Tourism Board, Board of Indiana, and Sierra Agent, which is the driving force for the Greyhound bus stop on their own 20 area in Portage, even though it is listed on the Greyhound website as Burns Harbor. There are several, there are plenty of more suitable parcels along 20 for another truck repair shop. But in the middle of our gateway hospitality district is not one that I believe is suitable. And I ask the mayor and this council to take a pause in the current negotiations for time to consider what is best for our city, our residents, and the future hotel and restaurant development around that important gateway into our city.
Would you please submit those comments to Senator Monroe so that he can review that? Thank you.
Mayor? I'm just a nobody. I'm a scrapper. I came to your office and I found out you need a permit to scrap. And they told me I have to come to this meeting to find out if I get any questions about this paperwork. So that's why I'm here. I don't go in people's garbage cans, I pick up refrigerators, washers, dryers, water heaters, the big stuff, just laying around. I take it to the scrap guy, I never take it out of my truck. I don't have a facility, I only have a pickup truck. Am I not allowed to get a permit?
And someone told you to come before the council?
Yes. I said I had questions about this paperwork, and they said you have to go to the council meeting. And that's why I'm here. It was a receptionist at City Hall.
Does that mean you, oh, you have to be ready to serve?
It talks about chauffeur's licenses and having your trucks inspected and CDL and all types of stuff. I'm just a single guy, I'm 65 years old, retired, I'm on disability. I'm not even making enough money to pay for my gas, but-
Well, I'm a little confused that you sent here. Perhaps the receptionist didn't quite understand that, but I believe you need to-
I was stopped by a police officer the 2nd of January and told I needed a permit to pick up scrap. Scrap metal, one of the C roads. I have not touched a board since they gave me that and said to tell me.
You would need to approach the Board of Works for permits? So that's where you guys do, that's the second and fourth, two things every month? At 11:00 AM, second floor, the lease.
Okay. Sir, you would need to get on the agenda so you can contact the clerk's office, get on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. And that is next Tuesday, that board works meeting. Guys, suggestion, call them tomorrow, Monday, Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Cameron Wild. I just want to touch on two points. I want to touch on the city spokesperson. So I want to know if they're contracted or the city employee? And if the job was posted on a public forum for at least 30 days? And then I also want to touch base on the third-party streaming service that we did not have before you came into office.
As far as the, our PIO, that is a three-month contract and it was approved by the Board of Works.
Then the city spokesperson as well?
Are you talking about the Public Information Officer?
Is that PIO, okay. And then also for the streaming service that you guys use to conduct the board meetings, city council meetings and streaming lines?
That person is a part-time person, they're just hired for specifically slash streaming meeting and that's all?
And what budget does that fit into?
I'm not sure, Scott, something is coming down. It comes out of the City Hall budget.
City Hall budget, right, thank you.
Do those provide the board works also? Yes, the board works approved that contract.
Just to clarify, the person is a contractor, not a part-time employee?
They're not.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to the council? If not, are there any others to come before the council?
Madam Mayor, I did have one. I had a request from a resident about streetlights on Lancer. I haven't had a chance to look. I can't remember when we reconstructed Lancer, if we put them in. I don't think that we did. So there aren't any streetlights there. Can we take a look at that? And then I can bring a request to the council at the March meeting for streetlights.
Yeah, and streetlights would have to come before the traffic commission and leave.
I'll mention it on Thursday, we have a meeting Thursday.
So I guess, would it be easier if the council could make a recommendation if there aren't any streetlights to put them there? I just didn't have a chance to swing by before I can hear.
Well, I think we need to look at the plan, right? AJ, was there a streetlight plan?
Yes, I'll investigate that.
Okay.
Unless the rules change here, I believe a council has a lot of streetlight in here.
Two.
Two. Okay, two, two. But we'll investigate. Sometimes if a request may have already been made, they may have not been installed because NIPSCO has a pretty significant backlog as it relates to streetlights. But we'll investigate that, and I'll try to get an answer to you before the next meeting.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was part of the reconstruction plan and they just didn't get to it. But I didn't want to make a request.
Because I'm not sure if the council members that get two lights want to use that in that area, if that was a planned area and they should have been in that area.
Understood. So we'll get, we'll get an answer as it relates to that, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Council, do you have any other?
I don't think we have any other business.
I just wanted to commend the field forces for a job they did on, gosh, remind me, councilperson Geishurst. It's Lark and Evelyn, excuse me. Residents had an issue with standing water in their front yard in the street. We sat down with the residents and the very next day, the issue was addressed. And the residents are very happy, and so are we, so thank you for that.
If there is no further business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
If you have a motion in a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor.